Thank you very much.
I thought I was drunk.
I know. Okay, workout. You feel that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. So great. Great.
Well, it's a little after six, so I'm going to call the joint city council study session and planning commission meeting to order. Would you all mind standing if we say the pledge of allegiance? Concerning where Mr. Fitz. So I'll go ahead and take a roll and then Nicole, do you want to take a roll for the planning commission after I do the council?
Thank you. So. See, Joe Burns said he was going to join. He'd be a little late, so we'll see. He's down in Olympia right now. So. We have Joel and Kestie and Sarah Diamond, Dylan Roy, Paul Cock and Nick LeBocca and Alan Henderson. So it looks like we're all here except for Joe. Okay. Daniel Firebird. It's like Silence is out as well as Patrick Huggins, Joe from that. Matthew DeVoy is here.
You're.
Joe Patizzi. Joe from that as well. Because silence. Well, we have. There isn't any special guests that I know of. So some unfinished business and it's the update to the 2025 comprehensive plan and climate planning projects. And so, Hillary, I believe you're going to be providing this for us, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, planning commissioners. This first item that's before you tonight has to do with the two long range planning projects that are scheduled for this year and next. These were previously discussed at the October first regular meeting in October with council. The two projects are the 2025 comprehensive plan update and the 2025 climate planning element, both of which are required under Washington state law and due in June of 2025. Beginning with the comprehensive plan update, this is one of a series of updates that have been required since passage of the 1990 Growth Management Act in Washington. The city's comprehensive plan was last fully updated in 2016. This coming update will require a review of all of the elements of the comprehensive plan to apply new population projections, anticipated new development and improvements to the city's roads, utilities, parks and other capital facilities, as well as changes to the city's development regulations and financing projections for capital improvements. A grant of $125,000 has been allocated to the city of Cedar Woolley by the state for this work, and it will be necessary to obtain outside assistance to complete it. A request for proposals has been issued to solicit responses by interested consultants with a response date of February 16. And a contract for the funding with the state of Washington has been forwarded and has been reviewed by our city attorney. The state is making changes to the contract based on those comments. When the final revised contract is received, it will be brought to the council for approval. At this point, I'm going to pause and see if there are any questions.
Where are you reading from? I'm sorry.
He's wondering where you're reading from?
I'm reading from my own laptop where I've uploaded some comments for this meeting.
Okay. But we don't have anything to reference that on. Is that correct?
No, it appears for your background.
You have a background cover sheet for the meeting. Which essentially is a summary of what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Was that in the? Any session? Let's see where background is. I'm sorry. Might not be. You have it right there.
Page three.
Page three of 15. Where did you get 15 pages?
Um, Hillary, can you share with us how long is this and do you anticipate this will take? I mean, you're talking about a very extensive study and coverage of comprehensive plan, which of course needs to be updated. So there'll be research that has to happen, plus the 2023 legislature added the things like environmental justice and reevaluating identity and things like that. So given what you're talking about here, I see where you have it, the deadlines are February and March of '24. That's 12 months away. Is that the actual deadline or does the city actually have till '25?
Uh, no, the, uh, the city has until June 2025 under the required update timelines from the Department of Commerce. That doesn't mean necessarily that the project couldn't take longer. And. I think it's very possible that it will. The risk is that if the city doesn't complete the project, then technically it may be harder to obtain state low or no interest loans or grants. As long as the city is in technical noncompliance with the requirement for adoption of a new comprehensive plan by June of 2025. We're to some extent fortunate in that. Separately, the Public Works Department has been preparing for updates to specific sections of the comprehensive plan, including the transportation element, utilities, stormwater, and parks. And those. Will be completed or at least be worked on simultaneously as the city is, is working to update the other elements of the comprehensive plan. You're right that this will be. Comprehensive. Project that does involve some new requirements, including the need to reach out and demonstrate that the city is reaching out to underrepresented communities to bring them into the process and taking into account potential effects and impacts of what may be adopted on those underrepresented communities. So. Assuming, hopefully, that the contract is approved and consultant selection moves forward. As expected, the next step would be appointment of an advisory committee that would be specific for this project and recruiting and selecting. Members of that advisory committee should be done with an eye towards the requirements that are being placed on cities and counties required to plan in Washington. So the advisory committee will be a part of this whole project until adoption of the new comprehensive plan.
Uh, Hillary, this is Paul Cock. I've got two questions. I, I think we've discussed this before, but with so many municipalities in the state under the same requirements, won't there be a real scramble to get the best consultants? And what happens if you don't?
Well, yeah, there will be a scramble. It, it. Another way of looking at that glass would be to say it's a real opportunity for consultants because they're going to be deluged with requests for proposals from cities throughout the state. So the request for proposals that we have issued and I thought it would be wise to go ahead and issue a request for proposals and not wait so that we can at least start getting proposals from consultants and evaluating them because we're not required to spend any money until a contract is actually approved. But it's possible to at least be looking at any responses from consultants that may be obtained and doing an evaluation. So for that, one of those tasks that's on my list in the next few days is to. Reach out to Mayor Johnson and the city administrator about beginning that recruitment process for interested members of the community that, that could be on a planning advisory committee, let's say.
Is the advisory committee, is that what, will the city council approve the finding? Is that how that works or?
Yeah. I do anticipate, again, I, I would reach out to Mayor Johnson first, but I do anticipate that those. Names would be brought before the council for appointment, as would any planning committee appointed by the mayor.
Thank you.
So do you have, you just said that you haven't issued the RFPs yet?
We have.
It says here that you have.
We have.
You have.
We have issued both RFPs.
Response deadlines set for February 16th and March 1st is each. So that's for the 125,000 and then the 500,000?
Correct. Yeah, the, uh, the RFP for the comprehensive plan update has a response deadline of February 16th and the RFP for the climate planning element has a response date of March 1st.
Okay, could you go into detail about what the climate element, planning element is and maybe touch on any unfunded mandates that are getting through on our way?
Um, I could do that if you'll allow me to move to the next.
Am I jumping in that?
Sure, that next item would be the climate planning element. But if you have any other questions about the comprehensive plan update, I could take those.
Yes.
That's the voice. I, I do this. I did that. It was. I didn't do the game. The company, the plan, right? My initial question was, what did that cover? Did that always cover the control piece? What did that three five, one three five game cover?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, the $125,000 for the coffee hit the flag. So that covers the cost of paying the good, good, good.
Yeah, he's asking about the 125,000, the grant that's been approved by the Department of Ecology.
Correct, yeah.
So Planning Commissioner Devine is wondering, what all does that cover and will it cover everything?
Well, the history of, of grants for planning projects in Washington since 1990 and, and I've been. An observer since 1990 of, of how that grant money is, is allocated and used has been that it covers. A, a major portion of the cost, but typically not all of it. There are staff costs involved that often are not reimbursed and there may be additional expenses which are not covered by the grant. Typically, comprehensive plan grants, I've seen them cover. About half to two thirds of the cost of the actual cost of, of doing the work now. Some of that will depend on the specifics of the scope of work that's adopted for the project, what we are asking the consultants to do. How much of their specialized skills and staffing are being provided and how many hours are being put into it and, and so forth. So the specifics of the scope of work are, are important. And as I mentioned earlier, one advantage that Cedar Woolley has is that our Public Works Department has been separately. Preparing for the need to update the stormwater plan, the sewer plan, the transportation element or specific parts of that transportation element. And so there's some funding for those specific tasks that Mark can certainly fill you in more detail there, but that's some additional funding that may be available for this project. So I do expect it to, to cost more in the end, to cost more than $125,000. But so that additional funding will be helpful.
Okay, thank you. That's good. So I want to make note that Councilman Joe Burns has joined. He's joined about five minutes ago, so he is online. Welcome, Councilman Burns. And I think, Hillary, we're ready for you to move on to the next piece of this.
All right, the second grant is for preparation of a new climate planning element of the comprehensive plan. A grant of $500,000 has been allocated to the city by the state for this work, and it will also be necessary to obtain outside assistance to complete it. A request for proposals was issued to solicit responses by interested consultants by March the first. As with the first grant, a contract with the state of Washington was forwarded and has been reviewed by our city attorney. This contract is actually ready for review by the city council, and so it'll be brought forward to you at the second meeting in February for review and, and approval. And I'll pause again. If questions.
Any questions for Hillary?
Yeah. Could you give us some kind of a summary of what a climate planning element is and what we are to expect from that?
Um, I can, but I should note that I'm, like many, many other planners and, and folks around the state, I'm, I'm learning, going up this pretty steep learning curve on what climate planning involves. So I don't want to pass myself off as an expert. I'm, I'm not on climate planning.
Well, I, I don't think anybody is, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You're right. But the guidance provided by the Department of Commerce for this first element, climate planning element required is focused on a couple of things. One is similar to the comprehensive plan update. It's focused on reaching out to communities that have been underrepresented in the past or maybe is specific to planning, to climate planning, may be impacted heavily by the worsening climate. So communities that are impacted most heavily by flooding, for example, or by wildfires. Or other climate events are supposed to be a, a part of this planning process. So that is through, throughout the whole guidance of the Department of Commerce. That's one of the themes. Another theme in the guidance is the focus on vehicle miles traveled and ways to reduce vehicle miles traveled, which is often abbreviated as VMTs. It's, it's a focus on reducing the amount of vehicle miles traveled throughout the community by such measures as enhancing multimodal transportation opportunities, pedestrian and, and biking opportunities and analyzing the ways in which traffic moves throughout the city from points outside the city through the city and vice versa in order to reduce the amount of, of, of vehicle traveling. And there are other things having to do with. Other climate impacts. I mentioned wildfires for communities that are especially. At risk from wildfires is taking measures to reduce exposure to wildfires and addressing impacts from smoke from wildfires and impacts particularly on communities that are most impacted by, by those. And flooding. Where flooding is anticipated to increase due to climate events, finding ways to reduce the impacts of flooding on the community. So one of the tasks will, will be to identify what climate events the city of Cedar Woolley is most exposed to. What measures and policies exist in the comprehensive plan currently for reducing those impacts and exposure and then what policies may be adopted that would further reduce. The exposure to. The impacts from climate events. So and then there's throughout the, all of that, there is a lot of technical data which will need to be considered. And I mentioned earlier that our Public Works Department is looking at. Updating our transportation element and part of that will be vehicle miles travel analysis. So that'll dovetail well with the. Climate planning analysis that will need to be done.
All right, thank you. I look forward to hearing more as more information comes in.
Hillary, this is Paul Cock again. Do we get the benefit of, for this climate planning of other agencies? For example, during the wildfire smoke, I know the county health department was handing out, we were at some event, they were handing out air purifiers, you know, kind of simple ones. And in terms of traffic, you know, there's some simple things that you can do to reduce traffic. Like we had great success at Western with carpool. You know, just get people in several cars because our main problem with parking up there. But seems like other agencies like SCAD or the county health department or others could help us with this stuff.
We are very much anticipating direct involvement by other agencies, state agencies in particular, but also federal agencies like NOAA in. This whole planning process because there's resources that those agencies can bring that. As a city, we may not be able to provide it as well. And those agencies can help and will be expected to help. And the technical data that they. Put together, for example, NOAA has technical data available on flood risk. FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, has technical data regarding flood risk and climate change and state agencies, the Department of Natural Resources and others have data. And to the extent that the city can partner with regional agencies like Skagit County to, to do more of a regional approach, it would be beneficial and, and more efficient and less costly ultimately.
Thank you.
Hillary. What are you? Right, so I was looking at the RCW on that. It's pretty extensive on the, on the mandatory elements and they were specifying, some of them were listed under the mandatory sector, but they're optional because they didn't produce funding. Also, are you able to, are you in a position to see if other communities are out there who may be a little bit concerned with this and, and are a little bit more resistant just to jumping on board and following through all the steps versus evaluating their own community for themselves? I know that we have a lot of authority as a community, but they hold the purse strings in Olympia, which makes it, that's where, like you were saying, if we're deficient, our grants, interest rates, all that is what they hold against us, not so much our, our ability to, to manage our own communities. But are there other communities that are, that are concerned with the way this is set up? It reads really kind of funky, like they put it together.
I'm, I'm sure there are other. I'm I'm sure there are other communities that are concerned. We haven't been contacted by other communities with that. Specific concern. It might be. Advisable to contact, for example, the Municipal Research Services and see what they have. And the mayor with some of. The. The networking and contacts that you have had in Olympia. Probably could have more to say on that particular topic. I'm sure there are concerns. This is a steep learning curve for all of us.
Yeah, it seems like they. They've done good. Like before this was even enacted. There was a great effort to reduce the nitrogen that was going in the sound through the sewage system. And they did an amazing job on that, but they didn't need necessarily. You know, a new RCW created for that. So. I am curious if that is the case, if there's more middle ground that communities can come together to negotiate. With Olympia based upon the timeline, the costs. What's effective? I mean, we're in Skagit. We got forest all around us. We've got beautiful rivers. We're not producing heavy, heavy greenhouse gases. And we can't escape the fact that we live in Washington State and just. Forty-three years ago, we had a large volcano go off that put out a lot. Of greenhouse gases, probably more than this whole state's produced. In the last fifty years for sure. So we just got to have, I mean, I think there's a way we can communicate if it's possible.
Finding that balance.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. One question I had about this was, Hillary. Will this also include? The volcano we live close to, the dams that we live underneath, the chance of earthquakes? Are they going to be accessing all? Or is this only things that are related to? Quote, climate change?
I I think the focus will be on climate change. The other hazards such as Lahar from a volcano, for example. Which are very definite hazards to specific areas. They they can be a part of a. Natural hazards mitigation plan. Which we're already. Looking into. The extent to which the. City's hazards mitigation plan can be a part of this. The. Guidance provided by the Department of Commerce. Refers to. A city's or county's natural hazards mitigation plan, and I think it's supposed to be. Melded into this climate. Element and be a very much a part of it. But the focus will be on climate events. Climate change.
Okay. If I can get one more question while I got your attention. Five hundred thousand dollars was the grant that we got. Have you? Got any idea roughly what this is going to be costing us? Or do we need to wait and see what the bids are?
Well, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant is for an update to the comprehensive plan. And for that. It's realistically a little too early to give you. An estimate of what the project is going to cost. It's going to depend on the specifics of the scope of work and to some extent on the responses we get. From interested consulting firms. That said, as I mentioned earlier. Typically, the state grants will cover maybe half to two-thirds of the overall cost of a project. That's been my experience. As far as the climate. Element is concerned, the size of the grant. That's being made available is. Frankly, on the high side, I'm. Along with other folks at the state, I think a little surprised by how much of a grant. Is being made available. It's too soon to say. How much it's going to cost to do the work, but. I think we're in probably a better position. As far as. Cost control. Given the size of the grant to be able to bring it all in under that. That price tag, but we're. We're still a little ahead of the. Of where we need to be to come up with a real estimate for that.
I want to make note that.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Planning Commission Joe Patizzi has joined us and then Susanna.
Oh, I.
First of all, Julie, just give me one second. I am. I apologize. Because I want to tell you. My calendar. I'm on it. And I missed this and thank you for texting me immediately to participate here. I get everything that I need to see up in front of me. And again, my apologies because that's just not like me. No way. Anyway, we're good. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you, Joe.
We extended grace, no worries. So Sarah. So. In it sounds like the majority of this focus is more on. Major natural disaster, but I. I'm a little bit confused. Maybe you can help clarify in that. The state is pushing for more. High-density housing, 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 housing. How and the in the city is being pushed to do so as well. However, we don't have the emphasis. Production to support the amount that they're wanting. They're wanting to reduce the VMTs. I can understand that we're making trails, we're doing the things that we're supposed to do, but how are we supposed to do? To create this environment? It's a catch-22. You want to create higher-density housing. But. You can't reduce the VMTs when we have no economic development. Provided additional growth that's going to provide the jobs for these people to work at to reduce their. Travel time and the lifestyles that they want. So I guess I guess I'm just very interested in seeing how the state is going to. Counteract that. How is that supposed to play out?
Great questions. We. Conversation, by the way, in planning commission meetings, multiple mayor and council meetings. The state of Washington, basically. And we're coming up on our comprehensive plan this year in 2024. Of how do we accommodate that? And I got to tell you, it is a challenge. But we're up for the challenge and, you know, there's just so many different. Organizations and people that will add to the conversation. Of how we're going to make that happen. And, yeah. It's. It's going to be a challenge.
If I may, in. If to your statement, the RCW. Thirty-six dot seventy-eight dot zero seven zero. Which is stating this whole element, the climate element. In section seven and eight, they they are under the mandatory, but they're optional for. Because they don't provide the resources, the financial resources to it. And seven specifically is the economic development element. And establishes local goals, policies, objectives, provisions for economic growth and vitality. In high quality of life in a city that has chosen to be residential community, it's exempt from from having to do that. But even at that, it's optional because it's. They're not providing, like you said, the resources to accommodate. They're asking for, from my interpretation. Asking for densification, but lacking to provide. The funding for like Jones and John Leiner, which has been vetoed numerous times at the highest levels. But that would be a key element for reducing that that traffic footprint that's out there. So it's already, that's what's making this whole thing. It's 2023, they put it out there. We're in 2024, it's unclear. To even experts about what the path pathboard is.
So Hillary, are there other communities out there? I know there were other communities that have kind of been ahead of the game as far as putting together some of the environmental pieces of this. Is there any way that we can actually pull from what they have done and? You know, that may save time, money, energy. Of course, I realize that some of that would have to be. If their plan is comparable with our city and our circumstances. But I don't know.
Yeah. There is. In a city that. Comes to mind, that was one of the first out of the gate preparing a. Climate plan. Was the city of Shoreline. They. About. Ten years, maybe a little more. Ago prepared a climate plan. With a lot of the policies and. And direction that are expected. For other cities to follow. So. We can very definitely. Take some. Of that. Work and integrate it into what. The city of Cedar Woolley will need to do. Now that said. There's some additional. Work that is part of this guidance. Prepared by the state that is new. And will need to. Forge forward with that. Along with the rest of the cities, but to the extent that. That other cities have done some work and we can integrate it. I think that would be a good question for. Consultant teams that. Respond to the request for proposals is how much of that work can they bring? And and make it a part of what we need to do. In order to reduce cost.
So can I add into that? Because we had this discussion back in October. Okay, when we knew this was coming our way, it was brand new. And we're going to sit back and we're going to look at other jurisdictions that have dealt with it. And Shoreline was number one, right? They've dealt with this before. And then we get how we're going to fund it because now it's a requirement. On our compliance. Okay, who's going to come forward? We don't want like. All of a sudden, you know. Hey, gee, I'm a consultant for green energy, this, that and the other thing. So we're looking at other jurisdictions. First of all, that's what we looked at. Back in October, right, Hillary? We were having a whole discussion. We're going to like table it until now, which is February 2024. Boom, here it is. So, hey. Who's going to pay for it? And what do we need to do? And we're bringing up a whole bunch of really great points like Mount Baker. Okay, and we talked about different things like. If you had an earthquake and a massive glacier slid. And it wipes out the city of concrete. Listen, this is really big stuff. This is like. The. Not going to say the elephant in the room. But listen, people, we live with volcanoes. We live with a massive wild river. And yeah, we have really. Interesting, different things that are going on here that we need to accommodate. And I think everybody here. It's not like on the back burner. It's been under discussion now for a couple of years. So I'm glad to see that. We came forward with it. We're going to now have a plan how to address it. Because this stuff is really, really important. Because it affects every life. Here in Skagit County and here in this valley. So anyway, thank you, everybody. Yeah, let's let's continue on here. This is great discussions.
Hillary, is there more you'd like to share with us?
I don't have anything more at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions for Hillary?
I do understand. What it's a. Play to issue or it's. We work with. With consultants. Really? Or do we review what they say? What is our role? This assets?
Maybe, Nicole, you'd like to cover that one?
Yes, Mayor. The Planning Commission is the. Land use and planning advisory body to the council. So. Ultimately, the Planning Commission will be reviewing. The various phases of this work and will be providing. Recommendation to the council. For adoption or. For not adoption. Of the. Comprehensive plan update and the climate element. I expect that. There will be. Certain stages throughout the process for both projects when. The Planning Commission will be. Meeting with the council and there will be. An opportunity to update and and ask questions and see where. Both bodies are going in terms of. The work that's being produced. So nobody's surprised at the end. But the Planning Commission ultimately is the. The body that provides a recommendation to the council.
I have a follow-up on that with the RFPs when we get. Proposals from consultants. It's expected that we're going to have interviews with the different consultant groups and determine who. Our people are going to be. Would it make sense to have the few of the planning commission members on that panel? That's a great idea, actually. Yeah.
Yeah. There will be a review team or two review teams formed. For the proposals that are submitted on both projects. And it would, again, this is for the mayor and city administrator. Ultimately, but I think it would be a good idea to have one or more members of the planning commission on that. Review team. But possibly a member of council. Several members of staff. That will get copies of the proposals and then. Schedule interviews with the top. Consultants for each project.
Thank you. Good guiding guidance.
That was noted. Absolutely.
Yeah.
So if there are no further questions. Hillary, I want to thank you very much for the presentation and for the clarity. And concerns and the questions that were asked. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the draft work, the live amendments and. Well, I believe this is yours.
That's mine, yeah. Yeah, so my intention of bringing this forward to you guys is it's been a really long time since we talked about work with amendments. It's been almost a full year. Last you heard about this was back April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. John Coleman, former director. Brought this forward. Since the planning commission. There was a pretty major change to the original draft amendment. So. I'll just kind of give some background on it, just kind of for a recap. So. Live work is currently. A permitted use in the mixed commercial zone. And in the industrial zone specifically as a buffer between industrial and residential zones. For some reason, when those were added in as permitted uses. I think it was an oversight by staff, but no regulations, no definition was put into place. So. We've been having issues with. A when someone comes up to the council and says, I want to build a live-work unit. What do I have to do? Don't know. So, you know, it's difficult for us to do plan review. We have nothing to review against. We have code enforcement issues where we have. The live-work unit, you know, the intent is we have a convenient place for someone to work and then secondarily live above their unit where they work. And, you know, the intention there is primary commercial. And we have people that are maybe just seeking a place to live. Throw their in-home office down below and it's it's not exactly the intention. So. But without regulations, we can't send code enforcement out there and say, hey, this isn't what you're supposed to be doing. This is definitely this is what they're supposed to be doing, right? So. We put these regulations together with planning commission to help kind of craft a definition. Craft some standards that we could. Have. To enforce these units. As we were going through the discussions, it was kind of. Evident that these things are pretty difficult to regulate. With the use and then making sure, you know, how how are we supposed to go and kind of. Investigate people. Are you indeed the? investigate people? Are you indeed the person that, you know, occupying this space? Do you actually own the business or, you know? It's just hard for us to go and we don't really have the staff um and the resources to be doing that. So um ultimately, it was decided that we should probably take these out of the mixed commercial zone entirely with the idea that mixed use essentially provides you the same product. It's a lot cleaner to regulate with the idea that you don't have that ownership kind of ambiguity there with the commercial space allowed to be occupied by just about anyone, residential. Like apartment units, same situation. Um, so you don't have to go and police that. Um, and then there are existing regulations. So Planning Commission did ultimately decide to take them out of the mixed commercial zone, but leave them in the industrial zone as that buffer. Um, we do find it, you know, when we have industrial and residential zoning, it's it it is important to kind of soften that transition, um make it something that will be easier to do that. There are, you know, tend to have negative impacts. So, um, with that, the other change was we changed it from the work to work lift and emphasize that it's work first, commercial first, and then, you know, we want the residential portion to be a secondary convenience there. So um, I just wanted to bring this forward again. I know it's been a long time since we kind of discussed this. Um, we had a couple of new members of the Planning Commission move on, so figured it might be a good time to recap that, maybe start some discussion on how we feel about that kind of major change, removing it from the commercial. And it applies to like the urban village type? No, so specifically, what what would this specifically tie something to? So the urban village mixed use overlay, that's kind of an interesting bit. So when you go to apply for development in there, you have to choose either you're under the mixed commercial regulations or you're under the UVMU. The UVM, urban village mixed use.
Good. Can I interrupt here for a second? UVMU has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. And listen, that's a total different discussion. However, I want to point out one thing, and Nicole, this is what's really important, and we've gotten through a whole lot of things. It's seventeen dot oh four dot oh three oh. That's our definitions. So much work goes into the definition of what we're even defining before we can even get into other situations like what's a restricted use, what's a permitted use. So let's stay on 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 uh on path here, so to speak.
I'm sorry, that was my fault. I was asking for clarification between the two. And my question results in the fact that we have apartment complexes up above. The purpose is to have commercial down below so that we are getting tax revenue coming in to assist with the infrastructure. And we have apartments that are full or getting there, and we have no businesses down below. So how do we avoid that in the future?
So, UVMU.
Low-income community, residential housing community with no infrastructure to support it, forcing us to go out for tax levies like we just had to, and we want to avoid it.
Okay, so can I answer that? So our urban village mixed use was our uh, let's let's call it UVMU one dot O. Okay, we gotta get the density that the state is requiring us to do. And listen, it it took about two years to get that code in. We have two projects right now. We got a BYK. And we have the uh or other project uh you know, behind the McDonald's.
Right, but what happens if we don't, if we don't hit that number?
Say it again, I'm sorry. I'm I'm listening here. It's.
Oh, you you said that we were doing that for to for the state to meet the state's numbers. What happened?
No, no, we we were simply like, we gotta get the density in, and that is one of our first explorations is to uh, yeah, how we we feel that we could accommodate our density growth a- and go vertical, right? You you don't wanna go horizontal sometimes. How is the city of Cedar Woolly gonna accommodate it? So this, like I said, this is called UVMU one dot O, because we're still not good on parking. By the way, we think the parking calculations are correct. And hey, guess what? You still need a car in Cedar Woolly to get from point A to point B. So, and this is all brand new, and I gotta tell you, the projects that I'm looking right now are looking pretty darn awesome. Our contractors, the people that have invested in this uh city, yeah, I think they're doing a great job. BYK's doing a great job, and the uh John Key Group, uh RJ Group, that that's a solid project. Okay, and they're they're mixed use, right? So I wanna see things on the bottom going on. We got the residential end going on. Let's one dot O. I gotta tell you, these projects looking great. So anyway.
That's that's something that I wanted to clarify with you is what you're looking at. Maybe, you know, maybe that is a mixed use.
It was required. It wasn't even optional. Yeah.
So what are you, sorry?
I was gonna ask you, uh, could you, could you tell me what it would look like for industrial with the live work? Um, that.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you can, if I can draw a picture. I'll do it, but I'll try to explain at the same time. So you've got an industrial zone property, right? And residential zone property right next to it. Maybe there's a here. So on the periphery of this industrial zone property, these are all live that's here, along that shared kind of adjacent line, right? Each one would have its own commercial residential unit above. You give them townhomes styles where they kind of share a wall, could do them separately. But the idea here is this residential zoning versus this industrial zoning, there's this buffer. So, you know, this big warehouse facility with trucks coming in and out and all of that sort of thing isn't as readily visible to the residential neighborhood.
So like, for example, I'm not saying that this is what this is, but say you have like um the old Skagit Steel area. That's industrial. So you're saying that along that, there could be live work? Yes. And and uh the same sort of thing with apartments on the top and the businesses on the bottom, or is it just one or one?
Yes, so essentially, one live work unit is commercial below. There's some bounds, right? So you have to have at least three hundred square feet, I believe, and max residential space is fifteen hundred square feet. So that's one unit. You can have them share a wall, so somewhere where hotel homes are done, where it kind of looks like it's one ongoing building, um but each is separated, each unit is separated. Or you could have them separate structures, one unit, one unit. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There's a real life example of that in town right now with Abbott's Alley.
Yes.
So the difference on the commercial and the uh industrial? Or, you know, because we have industrial like the um steel uh place, right, the ceiling? Um, and then we have commercial areas like what's over there. I think a lot of near Janicki Placeville where the school district is going outward, that's all commercial, it's just not the ballot and stuff like that. What's the difference on what your, what's the ask in this? I know John did a really good presentation right before he left, but he was he was kind of driving something home uh versus like uh explaining why we would.
Yeah, so I guess the difference there is just kind of softening. It would be, it would be something more like you would see in a commercial zone, like in the central business district or mixed commercial zone. Um, so if you look in the definitions provided, there are certain uses that are specifically excluded uh prohibited from being allowed in a live work unit.
I didn't do a very good job.
It's okay, so it's uh you look under the definition, there's a list there, it's uh number ten. So.
Could I add into things? So the way our zoning works, okay, it's actually Skagit County that requires X amount of industrial space versus mixed commercial. The city of Cedar Woolly, we we have latitude, but not the latitude that you think we do. So as far as industrial, okay, and what the county classifies as industrial uses. Let's look at what what we're known for, right? We have timber industries. We got a whole bunch of different things going on. The city of Cedar Woolly is required to have X amount of space, okay? That has to accommodate that zoning that we don't have a whole lot of latitude on. And Nicole, you know, look into this, Julia, look into this. But I believe that, you know, I'm doing this for a long time right now. We do not have any latitude that we have to provide that space, right? And if you look at the city of Cedar Woolly, right, I I call it the tail where you know, you you you're going on southbound, you know, towards Norm Nelson's potato shed, right? And then we've got my industrial area. I got a whole bunch of different things. I have twenty plus acres right next to the high school that is industrial. Right? That we don't have a whole lot of latitude because we have to keep that amount in uh in our inventory to make available. So unless I'm wrong on this, because that that means I'm misreading it now for the past twelve years, I don't believe I am. So anyway, so that's why certain things are what they are. So in our commercial zone, that's why we've tried to combine, you know, residential components with the mixed commercial component to look at our historic areas. Uh, you know, there is just so much work that goes into looking at certain different ways of how we can handle our residential side from our industrial base and everything else. And you wanna know what? I think it's it's a it's a bit of a balance. And uh, you know, so these are all really valid questions. But I wanna tell you, we've really processed it and we're trying to do the best that we can right now, especially that that last question, the buffers between an industrial area and where we're doing residential. So that was one of our last discussions right before we broke in uh in last year. So let's keep this discussion going. This is good. It's good stuff.
So.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah. Uh, Nicole, how are you doing tonight?
You're all right.
Good. I'm doing good. Um, so there's a lot of reading in here, a lot of jumping around between. So you kind of gotta scroll back and forth to figure out what you wanted to talk about. So it looks like uh, so in your uh summary that you wrote out, you guys are looking at dropping the uh live work or work live, whatever you wanna call it. The commercial below, the living space above, where it used to have to be, you own both. And if you didn't sell enough T-shirts in your lower unit, you'd have to move out of your residential unit because you couldn't have both, right? Okay, so um, so now is there, is it like the same building code requirement in the mixed use to where I can build a little shop and I can build somewhere to live above it like that one down there on the corner of uh Ferry and you know, the one where there's always trucks parked out in the middle of the road that they're wrapped, doing the wrap on, stuff like that. So that would be, that would be a perfect example of a live work, right? Where the sinking house used to be? Yeah, so um so were they permitted for that as a live work or a work live or whichever definition you wanna have it?
Yes, they were permitted as a work.
Yeah.
Um, and essentially, yes, it does fall under the same building codes of mixed use.
Okay, so um so that that would be mixed use commercial, that area zone is mixed mixed use commercial, even though on the map it you the the zoning map, I'm looking at the twenty twenty one, I think that was the last time it was updated. That location is actually within the central business district, which is mixed use commercial, right?
So, thinking on that now.
Uh, just to note, the CBD is a different animal, by the way. CBD has a whole bunch of different characteristics going on from, uh, you know, keeping historical uh buildings to what our uses are, and the CBD is, i- it's the heart of Cedar Woolly. And uh, if we have CBD, CBD is different than our our mixed commercial. CBD has a really great characteristics that uh we're trying to keep there in the in this city, so.
Joe, if I if I may, um, because Nicole's like halfway through a sentence and then you pop in. I don't know if there's a better way to announce it that you're that you're wanting to talk.
Yeah, you know.
It's getting confusing having having that.
So, you know, the the whole Zoom thing that we started during twenty twenty, I put my hand up.
I agree, but it it is on our end.
I apologize. Sorry.
So what I was gonna say is it's kind of like a is a square rectangle, rectangle and square kind of thing. So um, so I would say a live work unit is a type of mixed use building, which is allowed in the central business district. Um, however, live work specifically, we're trying to exclude because of that ownership discrepancy that makes it difficult for us to regulate.
Okay, and so the uh, the eight unit limitation for the live work is uh exclusive to the industrial zone?
So the the eight eight residential units is specific to mixed use? Not for live work. So live work, you have commercial unit with residential unit above. It's really meant to be like one, right? So
I'll try and find out.
You can have one large commercial space, eight residential.
But you can only go up one, right? You can't go up two.
For stories?
Yeah.
For mixed use? No, so mixed use, um, you're able to go as high as your building. Um, so I mean, if you wanted to do a small little commercial space for units on the second floor, four units on the third floor, as long as you're under your eight.
Where did I see that?
If I may, so the the intent here is eliminate work with, but that would pretty much mean that if somebody's business isn't there, they wouldn't have to move that far. And that, is that what we're looking at? Is that simply a simplified? They'd still be able to have a business and a house up top. It's just if the business goes under, they wouldn't have to like, hey, no, just like that.
Well, it kind of sounds like it's opening the door to just being able to put apartments above everything.
Well, that's to me.
Right, like, I mean.
Live there and own that, own the business separately.
Whether it's whether it's in the central business district, which we're trying to keep historical, but but at the same time, we might not be trying to keep it historical based on if if we see in the code.
Purpose for the discussion, you know, that's, you know, we're seeing with the UVMU. For example, they have their permits for commercial below. What was it? Seventy-six units above, something like that? And they built it as commercial shell space with no idea, no intention of figuring out who the heck that commercial space was gonna be. They just wanted to see the residential go in there. That would make their money back. They'll deal with the commercial space after. Um, and so kind of live work is a way that we could make sure through these regulations that yes, you do own this portion, you're signing an agreement that you will have this business space owned and operated. But secondarily, you can live above it. Um, the agreement basically our concern is that do we have the manpower to go out there and poke our heads into every single live work unit and say, you know, are you operating according to your agreement? It's hard, so that's me.
Go ahead, Joe.
So let's get really a little clarification here. Our industrial spaces are industrial. Our mixed commercial is different than our downtown. So let's keep everything separate right now. We do not have residential uses in very limited ways in our industrial. Our industrial is that. So let's not start mixing apples and oranges. I'm just saying, they're very, very specific. Okay, and that's why the definitions are really important that we understand the definitions. But our zones are very precise as to what their uses are and what you can and you can't do. It's, it's, it's pretty much that simple. So and if we have more questions on it, this might not be the day to, to talk about this.
I don't want to try to get an answer on.
Yeah, okay, so, um, Joe Burns, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually just had a question on the parking page thirteen. Um, you get down to the visitor overflow spaces, one additional space for eight units. That seems really low to me. And from what I've seen with a lot of our, not all, but a lot of apartment complexes, you drive around at eight o'clock at night, they're bursting at the seams. So I am a little concerned about that extra space. Would it be more reasonable to be one additional for four?
Who wants to answer this? Cause I'll touch this.
I'm the only one who has a concern there.
That, that's a good point. Um, and parking, I think councilwide, we're, we're, um, we want to not have enough parking. Um, everybody has cars, everybody does that. Um, I have the unique, uh, insight of working for Sterling, doing both facilities and streets and, um, all of the new buildings they built right there, apartment type buildings, mixed use, um. You drive by there before normal people get up to go to work in the morning. And there's, I think, eight spaces and I have pictures. It's actually pretty hilarious and they try and cram about twenty cars in there. Um, some of the cars I don't even, it, they must time who gets up first in the morning and back all their cars up, but, uh, parking, especially in the central business district, uh, lately has just become an absolute mockery. Um, so.
In the brown area you're talking?
Um, it won't here too. Um, I mean, any would, if I try to go to get my tabs renewed, I gotta park four blocks away. So I may as well just walk from my house, you know? But.
That's a simple change I can make. If we wanted to change the one additional space, um, for units.
So it's a work live units, and so we have the spaces available for the number of bedrooms, but what about the possible visitors? Or customers of those?
If you read on beyond the table, it says you need to provide the parking spaces, um, that for the business use for seventeen thirty six. So it's dependent on the type of commercial use that they're selling.
I, I remembered this from planning that there was discussion of delivery drivers and people taking product out and by, you know, having designated spaces, you hopefully ameliorate that a little bit.
Yeah, that's clear in there. You can't combine residential with commercial. Both residential parking in addition to the parking.
And, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the discussion on planning, it was sort of thought that, um, including work, live in the, the mixed commercials just seemed like another added layer of bureaucracy when you know, it was already covered what was allowed there, but it was more appropriate in industrial. That was sort of my understanding of what happened.
So we're not adding any additional things that are, aren't already in the code as far as bill. All we're doing is we're taking out the, the step of basically the regulators, the, the code instructors having to go in, which is an impossible task and trying to regulate and do that. It's just making, it's simplifying what we have.
What would I?
Yeah. The, one of, one of the points I, and it may or may not be relevant, but if we're softening up the work, live or the live work. I really wish you guys wouldn't have changed the name because now I have to say it all.
It's hard.
But, um, so the, um, it just kind of seems like we're softening that up on mixed use commercial. And so who's to say? You know, we can't put apartment units on top of any of the buildings that you could fit them in the central business district specifically is what I'm asking about. I mean, I know we have other mixed use commercial, like on the other side of highway twenty and stuff like that, but what could that potentially look like for our downtown area? Like, say I owned a business and there was a postage stamp that I could put a bunch of, like a few units, you know? Three, four high next to my business, stopping me from doing that. And then where would the people park? And, you know, so I know that it says that we have, uh, parking, uh, restrictions for work, live units in the industrial zone, but I'm, I'm more concerned about, you know, massive residential density in our business district.
That's understood. So right now, as the code stands, we've nothing stopping you from doing that. You're at, at least up to eight units, right? You're allowed to do a remodel addition if you just have a commercial space. You say, I want to throw eight units up on top of this. You can't.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will say coming down the pipeline soon, there will be a commercial space requirement coming in from you where we've put together that fifty percent of the street frontage of that commercial space on the main floor will need to be commercial. Right now, the code says, you know, you're able to have commercial space with residential above and behind up to eight units. But we wanted to make sure that we're maintaining that commercial area, you know, it's central business district is meant to be commercial. So we want to make sure that we're at least able to maintain that fifty percent at least. Um, ground floor being commercial at the front edge.
Right.
So that's, that's one thing we're, coming soon to put in place.
Do we have?
We're not using commercial space or residential.
Do we have parking restrict, um, like requirements though for?
So central business district parking regulations, pretty much they come into play when you have new construction. There's, when you look, reading through the code, anything where it's a remodel or an addition, not required to provide additional parking. So the reason, the reason for that's most of the central business districts already built out. Old structures that they were never required to provide parking, all they've really got was to service them or the on-street parking spaces. Joe, Joe Patisi's online again. Joe?
So parking has always been a major issue. And let me be very clear here. Okay, the city re- require X amount of density requires X amount of parking. How the property manager actually manages that? That has nothing to do with the city of Cedar Woolley. Right? So make it, I'm gonna make this clear again. So we got, let's say four, two bedrooms that requires eight. And boom, you need an additional one for a visitor. Or you have the mixed commercial. We have a calculation, X amount of space for our commercial requirements and then X amount for your residential. How it's administered by the actual owner of that property has nothing to do with anything. So separate it, okay? We require code wise as far as the available parking, but how the actual ownership group administers it? It's totally separate from the city of Cedar Woolley. We do not have any authority on private property to say, hey, listen, they accommodated on amount of commercial, amount of residential, they required, and they have that parking space. Okay, but do we have authority how they manage it? I do not believe we do. So let's just keep that in mind here. That yes, the code requires X amount of parking space. Okay, but how the actual ownership group administers that? No, I do not believe we have any authority over that. So.
So you had a question. Well, I was just gonna ask, uh, so if you have an existing building in town and said existing building was never residential, but is now being turned into residential with six to eight units with what is currently public parking, uh, once those units go in and those become and that becomes a i- because it's a, a remodel, the public parking then is no longer public parking? Is that my understanding?
Pioneer, you said?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out like, um, there's a couple of different spaces in downtown that look like they're currently being remodeled and I personally don't know what they're being remodeled for. I've been told that there's possible residential units be, going into them. Um, but I don't know that for a fact. Um, but it's all current public parking and there are businesses and, uh, and other establishments around them. What, what is their parking requirements or restrictions if you're on a corner and you share a block with current functioning businesses? How does, how does that work?
So like I said, the code doesn't allow for me to require new parking to be provided, let's say. That doesn't mean that the on, on-street parking becomes suddenly reserved by that development. Um, it remains public on-street parking. Kind of a, so it's government or has their own parking then I guess?
Yes.
And that's legal. Apparently the state is. Oh, so all the businesses that are there, people can't get into them because the apartment people want to are close. And there's nothing you can do. Even behind the back alley of already established businesses can you, um, I'd asked Mark about this a while ago, where then could we at least state that those are for the businesses that are the like in between the grocery and the, um, back alley? Can those be specific so that the women don't have to carry the, um, sewing machines a block away?
Yeah, it's difficult with that. There's no real, uh, way to restrict parking for certain businesses. It's just public parking. We, we've dealt with this occasionally around town. We had some apartments over near Styles Law Office. They had a tenant that was parking right in front of their building. There literally wasn't anything that we could do about it. Um, you know, some areas have restrictions on how long the vehicle can be parked in a space. That helps a little bit, but then it becomes an enforcement issue. You know, we've had many discussions about that in town, how that goes. Uh, so, yeah. It's a tough, tough matter.
I know that in the past, there had been a special parking spot. We cannot say that those are specifically before the residential places go in to the area. We can't say that prior to them coming in.
I don't think we can right now, but that's an important question. So I prefer that. Yeah, that's a part.
Let's go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, I got one for Hillary. You mentioned density, you mentioned building up, and Alan talked about massive density. That makes me think, what can you do? What do you plan on doing? For affordable housing? Just seems to me if prices are going up and you gotta put something in the comp plan for affordable housing, what, what's your plans?
I'm seeing a little online anymore.
I scared him away.
But Nicole, is that something that you would be able to answer?
Yeah, Hillary was talking about building up high density. What are you gonna do about affordable housing? You gotta build that into your comp plan.
I guess I'm not following what answer you're looking.
Everybody wants affordable housing.
Yeah.
What are you doing to comp plan to make it happen?
Um, so it, it kind of comes down to land capacity analysis. So when, when we look at what we have, current zoning wise, our, um, minimum lot sizes, maximum lot size, are those good enough for density? Um, we try to work with what we have in the city already, just because we, we know, you know, sewer capacity, we're pretty much reaching that. So annexing new land in isn't really gonna be the best option for us. So looking at what we have in the state now, potentially rezones, that sort of thing. Um, building height, you really can't mess with too much, given the fire department's needs, right? Sixty feet, that's pretty much their limit with fire truck access, being able to get people in and out of emergency situations, the buildings is important. So, um, you know, it might look like increasing the max building height in certain residential zones to allow for taller buildings. Um, but it's a tough question. Once we do that land capacity analysis and kind of work with what, figure out what we're working within the city and it's kind of it's up to the experts. I've never done a land capacity analysis before. I don't have the answers for you, but yeah, it'll be tough.
May too. I believe that is included in that, that, um, uh, kind of element too, section two that three, six dot seventy eight dot zero seven zero, section two. And, um, it runs down through section C and D on all what's required for additional housing, make adequate provisions for existing and project needs for housings. And then, um, it says includes, um, how's an element to ensure vital and character established for residential neighborhoods and includes analysis for low income. Uh, but moderate, low income, very low and extremely low in housing, emergency housing. So a lot of what you're asking is gonna have to be incorporated in there based upon this, the RCW annual. And we'll just have to see how our community checks those boxes off.
Consultants will probably help us with that. So Mr. Patisi?
Thank you. So our updates to our comprehensive plan, okay, deals with the fact that the city of Cedar Woolley participates in the Growth Management Act of the state of Washington. And a little bit of my own history, I was a planning commissioner for the city of Woodway back in early two thousands and my first comp plan update as to what the state requires. Listen, this isn't, it, it's mandatory in a way that it just gives a, a bit of a roadmap. Okay, it's, it's not like, it's like a have to do kind of thing. It's like, we're thinking about it. This is what we're required to do as to how we're gonna get from point A to point B. Just like this year, our new indoctrination is for climate change. So the city of Cedar Woolley now has to spend, what, a half a million bucks to figure out how we're gonna impact the climate on the planet Earth? I'm sorry. I think there's a whole lot of things going on right now that I, I'm all in. That's fine. I can deal with it. But you gotta sit back at what a comp plan is. A comp plan just says that the state of Washington told you, city of Cedar Woolley, by twenty thirty four, we're gonna have to handle over twenty-four thousand people. Right? My sanitation, my water, my infrastructure and everything. And guess what? I'm kind of not seeing it. So anyway, we all sit back and we're gonna like have a whole collaborative kind of effort to figure out how that's even can, how that can even be possible. And, uh, yeah. It's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting how it's all gonna, uh.
I think that's something that, that when Mark Freiber and I were talking last week, one thing that he brought up that I think um, is something that, that we all have to keep in mind in. So I know that we see some of these, um, exaggerated numbers. However, we only have so much space that we can grow in. And ours, our sewer can only handle so many of those units. So there could come a time, it's, it is possible that we would have to put a moratorium on building because we just don't have the sewer capacity to make that happen. So.
And that was a part of our public works discussion as well, in the fact that if we don't start moving at some point in the near future, by two thousand twenty-eight, we could actually be hit with that. So these numbers out here for this heightened high density and we have to meet this and the states of that. I don't understand why we can't just tell the state, no. I'm sorry, but for the city, the, the city of Cedar Woolley and our constituents and their livelihood and their, their wellbeing and the health of our community, we are not capable of doing that. I'm sorry, we can provide our best efforts, but with what we have and the limitations we have, we simply are not able to do that.
We already know that's true. We already know that's true.
I was under the impression that the new sewage plant would handle. That was a big thing with me and John is because I was mentioning like the anticipated growth by thirty, uh, twenty The anticipated growth by thirty, uh, twenty thirty-six was, it was a hundred percent. Cedar Willy's populous. And that was one of the things that we saw, uh, in Mount Vernon was nowhere near a hundred percent in their estimated growth projections. And so we were told that we had the infrastructure to maintain that trajectory, even though we weren't even close to that trajectory. And it was. Was very unlikely that we would even meet that, but part of that was we do have infrastructure in place with water, sewer, garbage. To meet that as we grew.
Yeah, that's, this is what planning is all about, what we're discussing tonight. So we are planning for a, an upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. That was the discussion we had with public works, uh, committee. Uh, and we need to stay with that course. Uh, and if we don't, uh, in the discussion I had with the mayor, if we don't build that treatment plant by twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, then by twenty-eight, we will be out of capacity with our current projected growth. Uh, you know, that we're seeing right now. And, uh. If you build a plant, you're fine. And that's what planning is all about. We need to stay the course on that. And it's a delicate balance because the connection fees that we charge on each new unit. Pays almost ninety-five hundred dollars into our, uh, funds getting ready to build that new plant. They're paying for the new capacity, basically. That's what, that's what growth management, you know, that's, that's what we do. Uh. We don't want our existing rate payers to have to pay for the expansion for new growth. That should be the development. Cost to pay that and that's why we have connection fees. So that, that discussion specifically came up, uh, because. You know, I've been, uh, I do study every year. I look at, you know, how many connections we have and I'm projecting them. And they're going up and we, you know, it's just, we are seeing a fair amount of growth right now. Um, and so it, it just was the wake up that, yeah, we really do, do need to start our facility plan this year. And complete it next year and very likely start building a plant in twenty-six and twenty-seven.
So that was part of your, your, uh, plan from a few years ago. You're just staying right on course saying, yeah, it's more important not to, not to deter at this point.
Yeah, I just, okay. That's a wake up call. This is just, you know, we can't slow down our plan to move forward with the plan. And there was one other factor as well and that was, you know, we have done a special, a development, uh. Agreement for a couple of the new buildings that have allowed them to defer the payment of their connection fees. Uh, we don't have that luxury to do that any longer than I could see. Uh, because we're so close, close to that time, we're gonna need the money in about two or three years. And so you can't afford to defer it because of that. So that's, that's another discussion.
It, it seems to me that the key factor that's been brought up by several people is this requirement for increased density and. Our ability for our infrastructure to handle it. And that seems like the, the, the key challenge going forward. The, are there, are there any municipalities in the state that have already declared sewer moratoriums or is that just not yet?
Well, they happened. There was one in Cedar Willy when I got here. Oh, okay. Because the connect, the collection system needed to be upgraded and that was in progress and that was finished and whenever it's finished, the one for it. So, yeah, they're, they're quite common. It's a tool that you have to consider using if, if you're not meeting your, if part of your plan is not coming to pass, you know, like. Starting the plant on time, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's when you have to look at that.
Just to note on moratorium, uh, they, they can be pretty hazardous for your economy. So you have an economic development goal. It's not. An objective you necessarily wanna shoot for. You wanna manage to play it down.
And I imagine it could also engender some bad feelings by your business community and people who wanna invest in the. Absolutely.
That was a roundabout discussion on your.
And we have finished that discussion. It's, um, seven thirty-four. We're coming up on the eight o'clock hour. We have one more topic that we want to discuss. If the council is okay and the funding commission okay, we can move forward.
Yes.
Are we moving forward to Mark's portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I'll keep it brief. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we've been doing a lot of work on the joint down law by the Trail Road Project. Uh, we're preparing a grant application, uh, for almost twenty-five million dollars towards a thirty million dollar project to build. Uh, five key essential elements for the corridor project to make it operational. Uh, this is a, we've applied for this particular grant, uh, last year. And we made it through the first two rounds of, of their three rounds of, uh. Uh, considering projects, uh, we fell out in the benefit cost analysis. Uh, we've hired David Evans Associates, uh, to assist us. They are experts in that. Uh, they are feeling pretty good about what, uh, what the numbers are looking right like, that we can get the business benefit cost, uh, analysis. Positive, which is what needs to be, uh, and, and be considered, uh, for funding for this. Uh, the schedule on this is we've got the five elements. Uh, we would probably build them under separate contracts, might be able to build a, to comply a couple. Uh, but with the environmental review and the time it would take to get a contract in place, uh, we're looking at, uh. Design starting sometime in twenty twenty-five would be the earliest. Uh, and then, uh, construction in twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So that's kind of the way these all lay out. So I will be bringing to council next week, uh, a request for approval to submit that grant application. And I am gonna be recommending that we commit, uh, another four hundred thousand dollars, uh, as match for that. Uh, this particular program has been kind of back and forth as we've considered it. Uh, the old rule said that there was no match requirement for agencies in our rural classification. Then, uh, early in the process, I was told by David Evans that they had changed and, and the change was we used to have. About a half of the city was considered disadvantaged, uh, south of highway twenty, basically. And because of that, we got some points, you know, towards the zero match requirement. Well, and that kinda changed our look at it. Well, we'd have to meet a twenty percent match and we recalculated based on that, came up with a way of doing that. Uh, and then we found out, well, in fact, if you're rural, you don't have the match requirement. So it went back to you. So, but as I looked at this, these five components, we're calling them now, actually are the minimum. Project that's gonna be fully functional. So that, what that includes is completing the connection under the undercrossing. Uh, from, uh, Sap Road to Reed Street is a key component. Uh, then completing the new parts of Trail Road are key components. Uh, and then, uh. Let's see here, if I'm lying straight on that. And then, uh, I, I don't feel that we could not upgrade. Uh, Joan, Jones Road as well to make this a functional, uh, route. So these things are all included in here. And we did, we were able to add in the north piece of Patrick Street. Uh, because of the opportunity that, uh, the developer of that property is, is creating. Uh, he's gonna have to build the road up to, uh, Brickyard Creek and donate the right of way or dedicate the right of way as part of the process. But we'll have to complete the last little bit of it, the last four hundred fifty feet. So that's, that's included in these five elements here. So. That's what we're proposing to do. And what I found out was, uh, there, there is a limitation on this grant of twenty-five million dollars. The cost for those five elements is thirty. So even though there is no match requirement. In order to have our fully functional, uh, project, we still need to come up with a twenty percent match. And we can do that. Uh, we can do that as a combination of our funds. Uh, we have six hundred thousand. Already committed for this project. We had another four, it's a million. Uh, and we have already, uh. A half a million dollars, uh, and, uh, SCOG awarded federal funds for the design phase of the. Uh, the undercrossing project we were talking about. And, uh, that leaves a requirement for about another four million dollars, which is a pretty easy TIB, uh, project for us. We, we've gotten, uh, two and three million dollar TIB grants multiple times. Since these are more than one project. We very, I, I'm fairly confident we can pick up TIB funds. And Charlie's gonna be talking to Ashley Kober, uh, the, the director of TIB on Friday and, and I'm setting up a meeting and follow-up to that. To go through this with him, uh, just to ground through that. I've actually talked to Ashley about this numerous times over the years as we brought this project forward. They're very supportive of it as, as they've shown by, uh, granting, uh, over two million dollars for the roundabout on highway nine for that project. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on that. That's where we're at. And, uh, again, that'll come to council on the, uh, on the fourteenth.
Can I ask a quick question? You, you mentioned the roundabout on highway nine. Is that highway nine in McGargile?
Yes.
Because, uh, as you're aware, the traffic at, uh, Evergreen and the middle school is terrible, uh. And, uh, I, I continue to get complaints about traffic on Carter. Cause if you, if you're ever, I got a vet there, if you ever go to Carter, it's. Car, you know, back, you know, bumper to bumper all the way down. So that would be a roundabout, right? And quite frankly, I. I have a granddaughter who's a safety officer, you know, she does safety patrol and I worry about those people on highway nine because. They're flying by or jumping out. So that would be a roundabout right there. And, uh. I recently, uh, took a, a great tour of, uh, the fire department, uh, facilities. The Farchi told me an interesting thing that I didn't know, that apparently roundabouts that they've seen in Cedar Willy have reduced. Uh, T-bone collisions and head-to-head, uh, you know, head-on head collisions. And that's a good thing. Uh, some people don't like roundabouts, but, uh, they could save lives. But anyway, so that would be a roundabout there. Cause I also get complaints on McGargile about all that traffic going down. Cause my understanding is the buses are supposed to go. From the, um, Evergreen and Middle School all the way down to Fruitdale and then down. They're not supposed to go down Carter. So I, and I keep seeing them going down harder. It just makes it even worse. So. That's my little soapbox on, uh, but, but I, I'd love to see that because it's, it's a real problem.
That, that project is funded.
Oh, good.
It's in design. Uh, we were originally planning to build it this year, uh, but because the design is taking time. Uh, and it's getting late enough in the season. We haven't started the right of way acquisition yet. And we have at least one full take on that, one house we have to buy. That takes a long, uh, because you have to relocate the folks and all the rest of that. So I'm, I'm pretty, I'm about ninety percent sure we won't get it out to bid in time to. Both meet the school window, which we have to meet, building that because of the congestion in that area. And, and, uh, and the right of way requirements. So I'm thinking of summer of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Which is disappointing to me personally, because I was hoping to see it built this, this year, but, uh, but it's the best thing to do at this point. Does mean we've gotta deal with another year of inflation. Yeah, but that's just the reality.
There, there is just quite a bit of frustration by the parents going in and out.
Yeah, now, you know, the roundabout of that intersection, uh, intersection, uh, was. And our traffic modeling shows it going from the level of service D that it's running right now and heading towards worse than that. Uh, to a level of service A, which it should be an excellent level of service. It's not gonna solve everything though, because you've got a gaggle of parents going through that intersection twice a day. And it's just, uh, the school district's done some work on McGargle to help that. They put in the second entrance into their second run, which has really helped. Uh, but you know, there's still a lot of people trying to get in the same place at one time, right? The Boys and Girls Club is right there too.
Yeah, yeah.
So the roundabout that's a trail, trail and cook, that's going in sooner than later, correct?
Right, that's one of the five core projects here. Another thing our traffic analysis that for this project did was identified. That the day that the new route opens up, the intersection of Cook and Trail would go from its current marginal level of service D. Which is acceptable, by the way, uh, down to, uh, an F, which is a failed intersection. So. That's, that's the reason I have that in these core projects, even though it doesn't directly connect to the new route. It would go, the, the level of service would drop to below our acceptable level, uh, once the new route opens up.
Mayor, uh, with, um, Carolyn Nissick and Sam Representative Slick and Low. And Senator Wagner in Olympia, are they advocating? I know we're a smaller community, but. Uh, that Jones John Liner has been a pretty big.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, good question. I'm glad you brought that up because, um, Senator Wagner is actually going for an eleven million dollar ask. For part of this project. Yeah, good, uh, good question. Yeah.
Yeah, he, uh. The legislature passed their big, big transportation package two years ago, seventeen million or whatever it was. Uh, and we had for years been advocating for this project to be a part of that package. Well. And it was purely political, uh, nobody with an R after their name. Uh, and districts got funded for projects for that big package. So ours disappeared from that. But Senator Wagner's still working to get it added in, uh, and so he's carrying that. He's actually, we didn't do a new application. I would have updated it to the new numbers if I had the time. Uh, they called me up and said, uh, we're gonna take it forward. Uh, again, and we're just gonna use the old numbers. They're coincidentally not that, that far off, so I think it's fine. And the ask is actually the, there's a, the first project on the list. Uh, was an eleven million dollar project last year. It's actually changed a little bit. It's ten point six, pretty close. Uh, was to ask, uh, for four million dollars from the legislature. It's a really long shot, but sometimes things happen where somebody that's got a project in the package or whatever, can't move forward. And then they can slide that project in there to fulfill that slot. That actually happened three years ago, twenty twenty-one. Yeah, um, with the eight hundred fifty thousand, we were, we were granted for, uh, the railroad undercrossing.
Oh, that was in nineteen, oh, yeah.
But anyway, uh, and that, that money, uh, we're gonna spend the last of that money this year to get the actual structure built by BNSF. We're gonna do that this spring. So anyway, this project is, is getting to be more and more real as we go along. And if you look at this, uh. The projects that are shown in blue are the ones that are either built or funded and, and in construction. So. Uh, we're really coming along. That amounts to about fifteen million dollars worth of projects out of the whole total. The other thing we're fighting with this is the cost keeps going up. And when we started this thing back in twenty eighteen, the scoping study. The estimate was thirty-four million for all of these projects. Now it's fifty-one. So. We wanna get them before too much longer built, you know, they keep them, you know, somewhere in range. Uh, it's really important if we can get these federal funds to be able to get this thing built. And the, and the timing that we've shown it, because it's kinda like what I said with the wastewater plant. The growth is there. We can't help that. And it's not just in Cedar Willy. That's the other thing about this transportation thing. It's highway twenty, which is taking all this new traffic coming from Hamilton. You know, and that's, that's just a reality. We've gotta face whether we grow internally or not. We've still gotta deal with that. So let's, let's apply for grants. Let's get federal and state money and do that.
Or, or some of these, uh, they, uh, sometimes grants will go to shovel-ready projects. Are any of those in that category? Or legislative funding, I mean, not grants.
We'll have to design all of these projects pretty much. Um, and so there's a fairly long lead time, but. For this particular program, that's not an impediment. A shovel-ready project would not really score any higher. It's all the benefit, benefit cost ratio that you come, our analysis that you do on it. If it shows that it's positive, uh, then it's gonna be up there competing for funding. So that's what we're shooting to do.
I see Joe has a question, but real quick, like, um, so you had made mention that BNSF is. The, um, undercrossing, that they are actually building a bridge. They're gonna build that bridge there. So how is that gonna be beneficial? I know, I appreciated hearing it. I think council might appreciate.
Are you talking about the Sap Road one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's changed and the reason the cost for this project actually went down, even though all the inflation's happening? Is that BNSF, uh, determined separately from consideration of our project. That that bridge was substandard up there and needed to be replaced, uh, ASAP. And so they've decided. That, that removes from our responsibility the, uh, the cost of. Of either putting in a creek crossing and getting right over the old bridge or whatever. It took a million and a half dollars out of our project. Uh, by them doing that. And, uh, as we discussed that and said, we're gonna do it anyway. Uh, but we still want you to close the road. We're still supporting you building the new undercrossing. Uh, they agreed that they would go ahead and build it. Before, uh, they wanted to hold off until we had the funding for the roadway underneath. Uh, they, they, they're no longer holding that over our heads. They'll, they'll build it for us now if they're planning to do that.
Go ahead, um, Captain Burns.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to verify.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to verify the ask with Senator Wagner. I see that the, the amount listed on his ask was a estimated total cost of eleven million, three thousand dollars. But the amount requested is only listed at uh, four point five six two million. Um, is that accurate as to what we are calling for from the state?
That's what that application was last year. And so that's what they took forward again. So it's an eleven million dollar project and a four million dollar request uh, from the legislature.
Here, anybody else? Any questions?
Okay, just wanna make sure I had good numbers. Thank you.
I think it's an eye-opener that the inflation's gone up almost fifty percent in five years.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's asphalt, that's construction. So I think anything we're doing or looking at with our budget, obviously, to see a fifty percent increase on inflation for product and service, that's, that's insane.
Yeah, significant. And, and quite frankly, we're gonna be facing that with the wastewater plant too.
Well, that kind of drives home that past conversation, not to open that up again, but that, the cost of that comp plan and all the, all the things they need. I mean, we're, every city's stretched on inflation and they projected those costs at that time. And we had that county assessor here and he showed us why our property taxes went up and that usually goes to Olympia. And then Olympia is telling us, we'll grant you this money, but then you're gonna have to put your own in. It's just more of a cost. It's weird. Thank you for the updates. I live right over here, so I get asked about that.
If there is nothing else, then I thank you all for this joint session. Um, it was a great discussion. I hope you have a good evening in council. I will see you next Wednesday at six o'clock. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
What a sentence. I could see where it's going.
Joe, I recommend you speak up if you wanted to say something.
Yeah, the, 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 what, what I wanna say is. Yeah, Mike Freiber, you are beyond awesome. Mark, man, you're, you're the best. I am, we, we are, I am surrounded by this smartest people in the room. I just feel privileged be where I'm at right now. And I just wanna say, thank you. Good night, everybody.